Here we go. I guarantee you, Mr. Jim Davies, the president of the People's Democratic Club, would you welcome my team?
I can't hear!
Welcome, and on behalf of the People's Democratic Club, I welcome you all to this event. I'd like to thank the Bombers, the ACLU of Santa Cruz County, Affordable, uh, like now, tax code. Hello. Climate Action Network, GLBT Alliance, Crossing North County Democrats, NAACP, Sierra Club Chapter, uh, Sierra Club, uh, Santa Cruz County Chapter, and Santa Cruz 350. Uh, they've all helped to make this possible. Bathrooms, women's down the hall in that direction, men's down the hall in the other direction. Please, uh, so we can have plenty of time for our candidates to respond to questions, hold all applause. I beg you. We've got a lot to pack in here. Uh, we will be doing questions as soon as I'm done, till about, uh, 8:30. They'll have been prepared by our co-sponsors and the PDC, and then we'll open questions to, uh, audience members. Sandra and I, Sandra, if the people see you, will be handing out cards. We need you to write your questions down and give it to either Sandra or myself. We will accept donations. Nancy will take donations up here, uh, just to help defray the cost of renting this space. Thank you for that. And I'd like to introduce our moderator at this time, also the Vice President of the People's Democratic Club. Oh, there's Nora Hoffman. Thank you! So look, we're a little crowded, right? Let's do the friendly thing. At some point, at a half hour, forty-five, an hour, put your hand up and let somebody who's been standing for a while take your seat. Do the do-si-do a little bit, so that not everybody has to stand for the entire exciting event. This is the last call for Jim Davies and/or Nathaniel Hawthorne. Last call for Jim... Sorry, Nathaniel Kennedy, sorry. Are either of those two guys here? There are chairs behind the candidates for anybody that wants to, uh... Uh, the chairs are coming forward. We'll give them a couple more minutes. I guess you're chasing chairs.
Okay, we're kind of worried about, uh, capacity here. We've reached our capacity. We have to close the door.
No.
Fire safety, Heather, do you close the door?
Oh, yeah.
So this is what progressive politics looks like in town when we live in, right? That's the last applause for a little while. We're gonna really jam through this. So here's the way this is gonna go. Can everybody hear me? I'm a former schoolteacher, so when I'm talking, you are nodding. We're gonna begin with one-minute opening statements each. We will begin the opening statements to my immediate left, beginning with J.M. Brown. It'll go down the line, and from there, you'll have to guess where we'll start, and then we'll be alternating. I'll tell you how long your response time is before each question. Oh, and one last little interruption, sorry. We are waiting for a campaign who's struggling with traffic and parking, and, uh, she'll be allowed to come into the room, but she gets here. All right, so, beginning with J.M. Brown, this is a one-minute opening statement. Yes, the timer is...
Not bad!
The timer is Randah Solick. If you would stand Randah, so that other people know who you are. You'll get a thirty-second, and then a hook.
Can you hear me? All right. I can hear me, so that's a good thing. Um, so welcome, everybody.
Why don't you go ahead and stand up?
Well, I said, "Welcome, everyone, tonight." Um, so I'm J.M. Brown. I'm a communications consultant. I live on the east side with my husband, Brian. I'm a member of your City Parks and Rec Commission, and a member of the County Housing Advisory Commission. I also chair the board at Arts Council, Santa Cruz County, and Power Valley Lozen Fishes, which is a hot lunch and grocery program in downtown Watsonville. And I serve on the advisory board for the Diversity Center here in Santa Cruz. As a former journalist, I value accountability, transparency, transparency and integrity, and I'll bring those values to my work on the city council. I'm running to encourage an increase in the housing stock with a focus on affordability, as well as public health and safety challenges that we experience throughout town, and also to restore and activate the San Lorenzo River. I believe these ideas are all rooted in creating more fairness and equity in our city, which are core principles of our, all of our sponsoring organizations tonight. Thank you, and I'd be pleased to have your endorsement and support.
Hold applause!
Good evening, everyone. I am Steve Plage. I'm a proud member of the PDC, and I'm also Vice Chair of the Santa Cruz County ACLU. So I'm particularly pleased to be here amongst this community of engaged people. Your attendance here reflects how deeply you care about our community. I believe that we're at a crossroads as a community. I believe that tonight may be, may very well be a watershed event in our history. What you will hear this evening will determine and inform you about what our future in Santa Cruz will look like. Certainly, we can be talking about affordable housing, and we can be talking about sustainable transportation, we can be talking about houselessness. But I hope we also find time to talk about campaign finance reform. We have find time to talk about tenants' rent. We find time to talk about a permanent home for the Beach Flats Community Garden. Let's hope we find time to talk about those issues as well. I am so much looking forward to this community conversation. Thank you so much for being here, and again, I am so proud to be amongst a community that is so engaged and loves their community so much. Thank you so much.
Hold applause. Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Drew Glover. Thank you, thankful to be here tonight. Uh, to be honest, uh, my participation in the city council is really unique, but also I think that my perspective that I bring to the race is really unique. I was born here in Santa Cruz. Uh, my dad was never around. I was raised by a single mom, who was a feminist, going to school and working at the same time to care for me. We also were taking care of my dying grandmother with Parkinson's, and I am a cancer survivor, uh, when I was diagnosed at twenty years old. So rent prices, childcare expenses, healthcare costs, racism, those are all variables that I have experienced living here in Santa Cruz. Uh, because of the reality of my experiences, uh, I am running on a platform of inclusive politics, so bringing the voices commonly left out in the discussion to the table. A fully-fitted transportation system, because it takes cars off the road, reduces greenhouse gases, and speeds up transit between South County and North County. I currently work at the Resource Center for Nonviolence. I'm the founder of Project Polinate, and I look forward to an evening full of wonderful discussion and conversation. Thank you so much for having me here tonight.
My name is Chris Crum, and I'm the former mayor, and I work with UCSE. Uh, okay, a little closer, thank you. And I work with UCSE. I run an internship program, and I love that program. And that's my opening, and now let's get down to the issues. The next city council has got to figure out how to preserve and protect the affordable housing that we have, and then expand that housing stock in creative ways. It has come to my attention this week that neighbors on Raymond Street have been, have had their rents doubled. In an attempt to force them out, this is happening all over the city right now. I believe these apartments and others like them may eventually house that unhoused student tsunami that is cascading down Bay Street next year, this year, and the year after. And students are sent by winning administrators to a community that is having a difficult time even housing the people who live here now. And I hope we can talk about this more tonight. Thank you very much.
Thanks. My name is Cynthia Matthews. Currently serving on the Santa Cruz City Council, running for reelection, and eager to continue serving this community. My activities during my years in Santa Cruz have always been geared at benefiting the entire community. Professionally, I work for Planned Parenthood, building the healthcare safety net. As a community volunteer, I worked with our community organizations in areas like neighborhoods, education, protecting the environment, our local economy, arts and cultural activities. In my work as a city council member, I continue those activities, particularly environmental protection and meeting our housing needs while protecting our neighborhoods, public safety, and protecting our safety net. I'd like to say I am a member of many of the sponsoring organizations, a longtime member of the ACLU, the Sierra Club, the NAACP, the GLBT Alliance. I'm an active Democrat, member of PDC and Crossing Dims, and a partner with Affordable Housing Now. I believe I walk the walk. My style is to be thorough, fair, hear concerns, and be pragmatic. I'd appreciate your support. Thank you.
Um, hi, I'm Sandy Brown. I'm running for city council because I am really, really interested in bringing community benefits to the people of Santa Cruz that, um, I think we have a lot of work to do in that arena. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about myself, and then I look forward to talking about the issues. So, uh, I come from a union family. I've been a labor community activist since I moved to Santa Cruz in 1990. I've also been a strong supporter of environmental sustainability and justice as a worker on an organic farm, and, I mean, one of the only unionized organic farms in the country, Wantney Berry Farm. If you all may be familiar. So, uh, and I put my soul through graduate school doing that. Since then, I've been a college professor, teaching students about public affairs and practical politics. And I've decided that it's time for me to get involved more myself at the local level. So I hope for your endorsement. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Steve Schnarr. I've been living in Santa Cruz for fifteen years with my wife Stacy Falls, a local teacher. I work as a bicycle mechanic. I also lead after-school programs with, with kids on bikes. Uh, my life has been dedicated to the goals of social justice and environmental protection. I've been involved in everything from starting a program to plant fruit orchards on public land, to advocating for an end to mass incarceration and racial disparities in the criminal justice system. I also worked on a campaign to protect farm workers from a dangerous pesticide, and I serve on the steering committee for the Resource Center for Nonviolence. As a city council member, I will work to engage with the entire community. We need to hear from city workers who don't earn enough to live in the city that they work for. We need to hear from neighbors who feel like development is being imposed on their neighborhoods rather than planning being a public process. We need to hear from people who are struggling to pay rising rents, as well as people who have lost housing altogether. And we need to balance all of these needs with environmental concerns like preserving a sustainable water supply and reducing our carbon footprint. And I am also a member of the PDC and the ACLU, and I hope that I get your endorsement.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Robert Singleton, and I'm a candidate for the Santa Cruz City Council. I'm a local business owner, and I also sit in the city's downtown commission. I also serve on the board of two local nonprofits that I'm very proud of. One is the Inspiring Enterprise, which is a social and environmental, um, or social environmental, uh, company and nonprofit accelerator program that takes whoopee idea, or whoopee companies and, uh, from idea to implementation. So through an accelerator program, helps people get, um, funding, helps them to create a mentor network, and hopefully implements a solution over a nine-month period. I also sit on the board of New Way Homes, which is a nonprofit that develops target, targeted Section 8 housing in the urban corridors. My core focus is a young, young person living in Santa Cruz. I'm finding it increasingly hard to be able to live and work here. I want to see more affordable housing developed in the downtown area, specifically the downtown area. And I also want to see deep restricted Section 8 in the downtown area, because right now we have a waiting list for around ten thousand families. I think they could really use a place to live.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Martine Watkins. Thank you so much for all being here. Um, you know, I, I'm running for Santa Cruz City Council because I want to be part of the solution. And I grew up in Santa Cruz, and I'm fortunate now to be raising, uh, my two daughters here with my husband on the east side. Um, I work in education. I've worked in education for over ten years. I volunteer on a number of different organizations, uh, serving on the Commission for the Prevention of Violence Against Women for years, the Childcare Planning Council, the Digital Nest in South County, uh, the Dominican Community Advisory, um, and then on the ACLU Board for a number of years. I, um, you, as a woman of a diverse background, as a mother of two girls, as an aunt of two young, beautiful African-American boys, I want a more equitable role for all of our children, and I'm hopeful to be able to be part of the solution. Thank you very much.
Hi. Better late than never, I guess. I'm standing up now. Anyway, sorry for being tardy, for my life. I'm, uh, running for city council because all my life I've talked politics. I've been a rating liberal Democrat all my life. And I realize it's time for me to put my money where my mouth is. I've, I've got four major concerns. One is homelessness. I'd like to see, uh, I'd like to see us find some shelter for these people. We've got almost three thousand homeless people in Santa Cruz, and there's no reason for it. There's just no reason for it. We should be embarrassed. Also, the needle on the beach, uh, that's really gotta be cured and stopped, and it can be. I'd like to turn the needle exchange into a true exchange, not just give me your needle, I'll give you a clean one. No, give me your dirty needle. Uh, I'd also like to see rent control and transparent rent. When your landlord raises your rent, he has to show you why. Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Can you hear me?
No.
No?
Yes.
Okay. The first question, and we will begin with Cynthia Matthews.
Can you use the mic?
It's dead. Okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah.
First question, beginning with Cynthia Matthews, is a one-minute response time, and here's the question. Statement. Please describe your view of the relationship between council and staff.
I would say in its simplest term, council sets the policy and staff implements it, and we set the budget. And so those are the core decisions that drive the city's work throughout the year. There is, there should be, uh, a deep respect back and forth between council and staff. I believe we have a talented staff. They believe in the values that represent this community, but it's the council that establishes policies. And it's our job as staff to make sure that those, I'm not a staff. It's the staff's job to make sure those are implemented according to them.
Just keep going down the road.
I agree with what Cynthia said, but I do have some concerns. I, I have a lot of respect for the work the city staff does. They are experts, and there is a division of labor that is very useful to getting the work of city government done. But I do believe that we have a city council that is more of a consent agenda council at the moment. And I would like to see the city council actually do the work that Cynthia is talking about, and be more engaged in the process. So I want to work with folks who know what they're doing and be part of that process in a more active way.
Yeah, that's a really good question. Um, well, clearly the charter's, the council's in charge of setting the policy for the city. Um, everyone here on this panel, we're good people. It's Santa Cruz liberal. Uh, I would love to have all these people as my neighbors and friends, but, um, we have a history of having people get elected saying good things and having done really good things, and then what happens? You know, they, it, it doesn't show through when they're, when they're actually elected. And so I'm somebody here who's actually gonna stand up for my ideals, and sometimes, of course, we need to work with staff, and the staff are doing so much, but, um, sometimes they, we need to stand up to them, and sometimes the city needs to, to set the agenda so that we don't have problematic decisions like, uh, a hotel being rezoned, where, where we could have had an apartment building and then giving a big tax break away to them, uh, and things like that. So, yeah, um, I hope I get your vote. Thank you.
So, um, to comment on it, it's, it's difficult as a council person, when you're a part-time council person, um, to, to be as engaged and informed about all the issues that you possibly can be, you know, all the things you're working on. But I think, um, so you have to rely on staff to a certain extent. But ultimately, it's gotta be council's direction. It's gotta be council's voice, and it's gotta be the priorities that council supports. You know, real leadership is sometimes bucking, bucking staff, uh, recommendation, and sometimes doing what feels right, no matter what the consequence, or, no matter what you feel in terms of, uh, what is the politically right thing to do. Um, so you have to go and stand up for your ideals, and that sometimes that means standing up to staff in order to accommodate that.
So I've, um, worked in government for a really long time, and so I really understand how it works to have and rely on people to do their jobs. And sure, you know, absolutely, one hundred percent, city council establishes the policy and the direction, and it's important and it's fundamental that the staff is then able to go out and make those things happen. And trust is fundamental, and if, if the trust is broken, then it needs to be assessed, and that we're able to monitor and assess staff to make sure that they are able to really adhere to the intent of the council. Thank you.
So I would, I would just... We good? Okay, thanks. So, yeah, bottom line, the council is in charge of setting policy for the city, and the staff is there to implement it. That's the whole point of having an elective body, is for them to do their job. As Robert mentioned, it's a part-time job for city council. It pays about sixteen hundred dollars a month. So you can imagine, without a change in the city charter, we're not gonna get people who can serve on council, who can spend a lot of their time. Many council members have to have other jobs in order to, um, to afford to live in this community like the rest of you. Um, I would just say that, um, part of my background in communications, I think, will help the city realize when it needs to communicate better and earlier on with the public, to identify areas of concern when it comes to development projects or other things that the city would like to implement. And I think that's one of the, one of the strengths that I bring to this, uh, role on council, is I can help them realize when they have opportunity to communicate more clearly and effectively with the public before controversy gets out of hand. So that the public is better heard. Thank you.
And I would respectfully disagree with the mayor. I think that city policy is primarily staff-driven. I think that it's a tail wag the dog. For some reason, the city council has almost completely advocated the responsibility to generate policies that really serve the people of Santa Cruz. We need a new city council that will take back that power, that will generate the policies, and pass them on to staff to develop the way that our policies and procedures should work. Thank you.
City council does, Mike, don't worry. Does pack policies, and staff does implement policies. However, there's no reason why the staff can't have influence with the council. I would like to see, uh, meetings set up between council and staff to discuss issues that are going to be coming up for votes, and so that the staff can have some sort of influence in the decision-making and feel like they own part of that decision, and will actually, uh, in, in, implement the decision. So, there's always a, there's always an answer to any problem. We just have to work together on it. Thanks. I hope you, I'll get your vote.
Okay, staff and, uh, the council. So, uh, the staff, the way I see it, works as a research and advise role, where they do the majority of the research with regards to, uh, making suggestions. However, uh, this falls back into, uh, what Steve was mentioning about how, even with staff recommendations, there are certain, uh, policies that are passed and agreed on from the city council that do not represent the community. One that comes to mind is something I saw a few years ago with the Arborists, generally never denies a heritage removal, deny a heritage removal, and the council still pushed it through and passed it. That was really frustrating to me. Uh, in addition, uh, under my idea of inclusionary politics, it's working with the staff, of course, but bringing in the knowledge and experience of the community, the organizations that have worked for decades on these issues, and making sure that their voices are heard and brought into the policymaking series.
Seriously, got a little bad applause.
I was on the city council from nineteen ninety-eight to two thousand and two, and I had a respectful relationship with staff. An old friend of mine said, uh, he lived in Washington, DC, and he said, "If you want a friend in this town, get a dog." And so what I'm saying there is that you, as a city council, you are in the direction of the city manager. For example, we had a landfill where the people are trained. And then everybody has gone to school, they're engineers, but they were trained to fill up land with garbage, and that was no longer needed. So then you have to, you know, direct the city manager, or talk to the city manager about retraining people and what we are gonna do. Same thing happened when we did curbside yard waste and recycling programs. We had to retrain people, and we had a whole new program. And it was done really well. Um, I think there is too much development on the east side and the west side right now. And I think that, as far as the corridor plan is concerned, I think we need to take another look at that. And so as a, and that's not because I sat down with the staff, and they were, you know, we had a very amicable conversation. Say more later.
Does this thing work?
Yeah.
Uh, beginning now with Sandy Brown. The next question is a two-minute response time. What short-term initiatives would you offer to address the immediate housing problem?
Thank you for asking that question. It's a wonderful question. Uh, I think as a city council, we have limited possibilities for addressing the, the larger challenges of affordability in our housing stock. But I do think there are some concrete things that we can do, and I want to work on those viable practical policies. One of them is, uh, making sure that affordable housing gets built on-site in new economic development, or new development projects, and, and that we increase the number of units that get built as a part of that. So raising the percentages. We can do better than the state's minimum of fifteen percent. Right? We can do better. And I also want to try to work on maintaining affordable housing stock, and that means to do your work at ADUs. Existing ADUs, unpermitted and permitted, as we all know. And I also think it's time to explore rent control. So rent stabilization, if we want to call it that. It's, it's worked in other communities, and it's time. So those are the immediate things that I would work on.
Yeah, certainly, if you go out asking people, "What's, what's the biggest issue for you in Santa Cruz?" Housing prices is top of the list, so, um, I agree with Sandy. There's only so much we can do as a one city in a bigger area, but I've, I've been spending a lot of time going out, talking to different community leaders and different public officials, trying to figure out what steps can we take. And a few have already been mentioned. ADUs, uh, permitting more of them, and specifically permitting them for use as housing, and, and limiting them, the amount of vacation rentals. Um, another one, I, I, one of the people I was talking to was Sidley Simon, who has a really interesting, uh, development idea, uh, which he's already implementing, of specifically developing housing for working class and working-for people, and doing, renting it at a below-market rate, and then using, you know, having investors, the phrase he used was maximizing impact nonprofit, working with investors who understand they're not gonna get as much of a return, but the, the extra money goes back into the next housing. So I would like the city as much as possible to work with developers like that. If we're talking about people building market-rate housing, I agree, we could do better than fifteen percent asking for affordable housing. If we're talking about people building market-rate housing, I agree, we could do better than 15% asking for affordable housing and actually build it and not have a fee paid instead. I know the in-lu fees, they came from a good place to try to make up for the lack of redevelopment money. But there's other ways we could get money. We could increase the transient occupancy tax and allocate some of that money to go for HUD money and federal and state money, so affordable income housing. There's other strategies that we could take. Part of the thing for having more affordable housing is having more housing, and that is very complex. I don't think I have enough time to get into my full answer to that question. But what I want to do is balance environmental concerns, water usage and other traffic and all these things, and neighborhood input and inviting neighborhoods into it. But I certainly think we could have some more high-density, lower-income bracket housing, and trying to balance with these other needs, and we'll, okay, I've got to stop. There we go.
All right, I'm going to try to stay slow because I have a lot to say here. So first of all, I sit in the board of that nonprofit that Sidley is doing to try to implement Target Section 8 infill development. He's also on my campaign committee. So just a couple of items I want to talk about. First and foremost, I want to create a landlord liaison here in Santa Cruz. Again, like I mentioned, there's a 10,000-person waiting list, our section in Dodgerston in San Luis County. There are people who have fully funded housing vouchers that are willing to pay market-rate rent. The problem is that we don't have the units to put them in. So I actually want to see, in the downtown recovery plan, we're trying to build about, looks about like we can get around 1,000 new units in the downtown area, just the downtown area, from new transit, over the next five years if we enact this plan. And I want to see 50% of that deed restriction for Section 8 tenants, because this way the developer doesn't take a hit, because they're getting market-rate rent, and we're getting people the housing they actually need, the people who are making the lowest incomes in our community. Next, I want to see amendments to the county's rental, or the city's rental inspection ordinance. I myself have been kicked out of housing twice as a result of this rental inspection ordinance. And I think if the city's going to be going through and kicking people out of their homes, there needs to be some kind of city support in order to relocate these individuals. So I want to see that. I want to see an ADU permit that will allow for three months out of the year, you can go ahead and use your ADU as a vacation rental if you agree at nine months out of the year to rent it to a student. Because this way they can make students out of the single-family homes that they're currently crammed into, and you allow homeowners an incentive to make that money during the vacation season to get ROI on their ADU unit. The next thing is I want to actually have UC finance some off-campus housing, again, in the downtown area, because right now it's eight times more expensive to build per unit on campus than it is off-campus, because every room has to be ADA compliant on a campus that basically does this. That makes it really difficult. So we have to be practical here in how we want to approach housing. Last thing I want to mention is inclusionary units only apply to ownership units. And the average price for an ownership unit in Santa Cruz for inclusionary units in portable is $450,000. That's not affordable.
So I value all, at all stages of life and also socio-economic, and I feel like our housing policies need to reflect that. I have a goal of embedding health considerations into policies, and I'm interested in applying that if elected to city council. I also shy away from saying that we, as a community, are in a crisis. Because, you know, there's communities that are in war-torn countries or have been leveled by an earthquake that are truly in a housing crisis. I feel like we're at a crossroads, where we can decide and design what the future of Santa Cruz and what the current state of Santa Cruz will be. And I believe that what will take, my first immediate step would be, is to engage all stakeholders, engage the entire community, come up with a robust, comprehensive action plan, and really, truly get to the root and make a dent in affordable housing in this community, and it has to be diverse. It has to address ADUs. It has to address vacation rentals. When looking at growth, it has to have a reflection of a value for me, for families. We have a severe shortage of childcare facilities in this community, and working families are leaving. We can also come together with our business community, we can come together with our education community, and work together and looking at how we can comprehensively solve and really come up with what the future of Santa Cruz will be. If we want to be a place where, I know my kids probably can't afford to live, then I think we have, we're at a crossroads to design that. And I hope to apply my experience as a community organizer and educator to be able to bring that diverse group of stakeholders together to ensure that we can comprehensively, truly address and get at the housing issue. I had a friend recently who's in education. She left this community as a teacher because she could not live here and raise her kids here. I have people who are leaving after their kids graduate because they cannot live here or raise their kids here. It's a huge issue. Working people are leaving, and we need to address it comprehensively. And I feel like I can do that from my community organizing experience. Thank you.
Can we hold on one second? I'm going to be introducing you by name. We have a brief request. If there is a fluent Spanish speaker available to assist with translation, be very helpful. Is there anybody able to do that? Thank you, Ernestina, right over here. And also, since I have the microphone, anybody who's willing to share their seat, give some time to somebody who's been standing for a while, if you could raise your hand, do the do-si-do. We'll give you a minute to make that switch. Third sentence, the music is playing. Find that chair. Your other hands up, down in front. People willing to give up their seats. Yeah, and there's an empty chair here in the front. People who are standing, if you want empty chairs, there's one, second row middle. You're moving towards it, though. There's an empty chair right there. And another empty chair in front. Here we go. We're going to continue on. Thank you all for that generosity. We'll do it again in a little while. All right, back to me now. Here we go. Thank you all for raising your hands. We'll come back to you. People are settling.
Okay, all right. I should have taken that minute to do some meditation or something, but I will breathe while I speak. So we're talking about housing, and I would say I have five ideas about how to create more housing in our community or how to deal with the housing issue. First of all, as you know, the city is not a developer. It has to rely on relationships with private and nonprofit developers to do affordable housing and even market-rate housing. And so we could look at increasing the housing trust fund, we could look at doing an increase in the transient occupancy tax, as we mentioned before. We have a quality of life fund that is likely to come up before our city voters. There could be a housing component to that. Secondly, I would encourage large institutions like the city and the school district and others to look at surplus property that they own throughout the city that could be developed for housing. I have a strong preference against in-lu fees on inclusionary rules, and I believe that in order to have a diverse community, we have to have affordable units within new development. And as was mentioned earlier, also because of a court ruling called the Palmer decision, we cannot require inclusionary housing in rental development. So the mechanism the city would have for that would be to work with developers in the actual plan development agreement to make sure that there is space set aside for affordable rentals. And lastly, I would say that we should work with, we should encourage the university to work with private developers to consider housing, additional housing on campus as well as off-campus, as has been successfully modeled in other communities where there is exclusively student housing developed with universities in concert with private developers if the university doesn't have public funds to do so. Thank you.
Steve White.
Thank you. In terms of maintaining our current stock of affordable housing, I really believe that the affordable housing now folks have a great idea, that we really need to protect the affordable housing we have now, and they have done great work in doing that. I also talked to Sidley Simon about the workforce, the Four Good project that they're building in Watsonville. It is a great, you know, model we can bring to Santa Cruz and build workforce, affordable housing here. In terms of really generating more affordable housing in Santa Cruz, there is a program that the city and Habitat for Humanity are partnering with that allows a senior that has a non-compliant ADU on their property to have that ADU improved by Habitat, to pay the cost of labor, and the city will do all the permitting for them. And so that senior, senior couple, if they want to downsize their lifestyle, can move into the ADU and rent their primary residence, or they extend their primary residence and rent the ADU. We can expand that citywide. We can do that, and we can put scores of new workforce-affordable ADUs on the market every year, and we can put scores more on the market every single year thereafter. We can do that in a public-private partnership with Habitat or like-minded nonprofits. And I will tell you this, that we absolutely, positively must raise our inclusionary unit rate from 15% to 25%. And we absolutely, positively must abolish any in-lu fee for opt-out. We must get the developers to build housing for us so we can have affordable housing in our city. Those are the things we need to do to do it now, to generate more affordable housing and to move into the future and make us an affordable community. Let me leave you with one more thing. There's a friend of mine and a neighbor who works for the Department of Public Works of Santa Cruz. He works for the sanitation division. Of the 35 people who work in his division, these are well-paid people. Only seven live in Santa Cruz, and none of them are homeowners. That's the state of affordable housing in Santa Cruz. That's our challenge.
Jim Davis.
I liked every idea that Bob said. Our issue, though, is rent control. We need to have real rent control. We need to have transparency in rent prices. If your landlord says he's got to raise your rent by $200, you should have the right to say why, and he should have to show you why he has to raise the rent on you. What we're doing in Santa Cruz, it reminds me of the 49ers. They're, you know, no one can afford a ticket. You know, it's like, and we're pricing the Santa Cruzans out of our market because people who work here can't afford to live here, and that just doesn't work. It just can't, it's not sustainable, and it's, again, an embarrassment to the quality of Santa Cruz. People should be able to afford to live here, and if we do invest in affordable housing, we do use rent control, and we do create a living wage, not a minimum wage, but a living wage of at least $15, if not $20, you know? Then these things put together will help at least stabilize the housing situation, because right now, we're going through a lot of hell, and so that's all I have to say.
Drew Glover.
Thank you. Talk slower. Tonight's that two minutes, though. So a lot of wonderful ideas. For some of you, or hopefully all of you that came in, you got a chance to see that platform agreement that some of the candidates, if not all of the candidates, have agreed to. I'm not sure. Micah back there is raising his hand. I and one of the candidates have agreed to that, so I'm just going to rally off kind of what those are, because you don't have them on there. Increasing inclusionary housing from 15% to 25% without any exceptions on all new developments. Doing away with in-lu fees. A dedicated fund to support affordable housing built through tax speculations, and increase in the transient occupancy tax. Support a tenants' right program, so they have recourse. And restrict vacation rentals to a certain amount of days per year, 90 to be exact. So this is another great opportunity to kind of show a contrast between some of the thought processes that are up here. You've heard some of my other peers say that we're not in a crisis, and this is a subjective term, right? So absolutely, we're not in a war-torn country, but there are people that are suffering here in Santa Cruz that need to be addressed. Some great examples, someone from my campaign, he just got priced out of his house or kicked out of his house. He can't work on the campaign right now because he's so worried about trying to find a place to live. He's in college. On the other side of the spectrum, we have an individual that's 50 to 60 years old that's a member of the SCIU. She's been here for 30 years, getting priced out of her house, 90-day lease termination, doesn't know where she's going to move, might have to leave out of Santa Cruz. So the fact that people are experiencing these levels of crises means that we need to react in a suitable way, not downplay it and say it's something we should have to plan out for the future.
Thank you. There was an issue at Wayne Institute the other day, that there was two townhomes that were in the newspaper. They sold for 600, they're selling for $679,000, and the developer was allowed to call that affordable housing. You would need a $128,000 paycheck to get a mortgage for that. I'm an idealist, but I've also gotten things done. There are two projects I just want to point to, because there's a whole bunch of housing that was built that the council has been involved in. 1010 Pacific Avenue, we didn't let the developer pay the in-lu fee, which means you don't have to build the units on-site. You can pay into a fund. We didn't let any developer do that when I was on the city council. They got 25% to 1010 Pacific Avenue, affordable units. That's a huge project. Schaefer Road, you know, over there by the Homes Garden project, another huge project, 25% affordable. This is what I was trying to get at before. This council, the current council, is allowing staff to just run over neighborhoods like Brands Afforded, like, you know, on the east side, and Seabright. And you walk around town, you see these buildings, and you go, "What is that?", this is market-rate housing. I think we all can agree, I think the affordable housing folks and the east-side neighbors and the students can come to an agreement that what we need is affordable, not market-rate. So stop with the market rate. They're going to tell you, "Oh, we have to have the market rate, we have to bring them in, because that's the only way you get affordable." No, you make a deal on the city council. I just want to leave you with one thing. The Beach Flats Garden for, excuse me, the houses I was referring to, there's four of them up for sale right now on Raymond Street. Imagine the city council buying those buildings and starting a housing land trust and selling it back to the residents. What a concept. It's being done now. Thank you very much.
The housing situation has been severe in Santa Cruz for years. We all know that. It has truly spun out of control in this past year at a rate that really defies everyone's imagination. And we all know, this is compounded by our proximity to, our being part of Northern California. Eight out of 10 of the least affordable communities in the country are in Northern California. And we are part of that dynamic. When you hear people are moving here to Santa Cruz because it's cheaper, that's breathtaking. So we are hearing that this true crisis is affecting every sector. It's affecting the ability for private sector, for nonprofit and public sector to recruit and retain employees. I hear this from everybody. The crisis of housing is being felt by every sector and every age. What I do is, among other things, first of all, protect our existing housing stock, our rental housing, our Section 8 housing. I would pursue options currently coming forward in the downtown design plan. That downtown design plan was developed after the earthquake. That was 25-plus years ago. There's now the potential to do much more and include multifamily housing there, both rental and for sale. I personally believe in a mix of both market-rate and designated affordable. We're exploring options for tiny houses. We're exploring options, again, for reviewing the ADU ordinance. I do believe that there's a place for in-lu fees, where they can help be our local match to get more housing for the buck, for very much-needed housing. I've worked with UCSC. They are facing state-level restrictions on the kinds of housing, type of housing and finance. They can use our help to change those system-wide rules. I've worked with major employers here in Santa Cruz to start exploring options for workforce housing. And I believe all of these need ultimately review by our planning commission as they work their way back to the city council.
Thank you. We'll begin the next question with Steve Schnarr. This is a one-minute, 30-second response time. What actions can the city council take that would support LGBT QIU?
So since I've been living in Santa Cruz for the past 15 years, I was thinking about the other day, almost half of all the people that I've lived with in shared houses have been LGBT and a lot of my coworkers. But I was thinking back about how that is really different from where I started when I was younger. And I have to admit, when I was a straight cis man growing up in this country, I used to be homophobic, and when I was a kid, I would say things that were mean, which is terrible. And so now, as an adult, and I got to actually meet lots of LGBT people, become friends and colleagues of them, and as an educator, currently, I, it's just a little bit, I work once a week teaching after-school program, but I've worked in after-ED, and I've worked as a substitute T. but I've worked in after-ED and I've worked as a substitute teacher. And one thing that I always did was when I would hear something that was offensive then, you know, I would try to stop and have a conversation and not just say, oh, you can't do that, that's bad, but, so, you know, it looks like I got thirty seconds left, so what can we do? I had a housemate who actually worked with queer youth in the schools, that was her job and I think it's great to have whatever support systems we can, gay straight alliance, have programs where people can have a counselor or somebody to talk to and peer support. Gender-neutral bathrooms is a big thing to help certain people who are really upset about that throughout the country, but Santa Cruz is better than the rest of the country, so we should go forward with gender-neutral bathrooms too.
Robert Singleton.
I'll be brief with this one because I think it's a no-brainer. I think it's fundamentally about creating safe spaces, about creating support networks and about education. Safe spaces, you know, on UCSC we have queer-only dorms, you know, I think having the place where people can speak and be with other people that they identify with, I think it's really important to provide for those spaces. So I definitely support policies that will support the creation of those spaces, whether it's community centers or whether it's other active networks. Creating support networks so that, you know, people don't feel like they're alone, that they're dealing with issues with their identity, they can have places to talk to, a hotline to call, these things I think are basic and that we need to support these things. And then finally, education, this comes down to what we're going to do in school districts. I think I would love to see a very actionable item will be some item incorporated into sex education early on so that people understand that gender isn't a binary, it's a fluid spectrum. So these are kind of just some actual items, I would say, LGBTQ rights as well as just awareness.
Martine Watkins.
One thing I hope to speak about a little bit about my campaign is my vision. And so I was, you know, thinking about how do we move out of the latest reaction to a much deeper solution? So just to address the issue of a crisis, I was reviewing some documents in the past, it was fifteen years ago, about affordable housing and the affordable housing crisis. I don't want to put this on our future, it takes long-term solution planning to move us out of the latest reaction to a much deeper problem. And then in direct response to the LGBTQ and supporting that community in education, you can work with me. I work in education, I'm a community organizer, I've worked to oversee our school mental health partnership, working with numerous partners to come together to identify how we can support LGBTQ youth in our school. That can be having more services on-site, mental health services, working to have gender-neutral bathrooms as a must, incorporating history and pedagogy into our professional development so our teachers incorporate that and make it part of our instruction as well as working to support that the needs, there's such high-risk needs for LGBTQ community and their students are experiencing those things by drug, alcohol use at higher levels than other students and we need to address that specifically, we need to be there for our students, it's all about equity and inclusion, thank you.
Teach them how to read.
Graham Brown. Anybody want to switch seats for a second?
I'd like to mention that I'm also a GLBT alliance, which is one of your sponsors. The thing that I would do as a citizen of Santa Cruz to support LGBT youth would be to help elect and hopefully gain person to the city council. I would also support updating the city's non-discrimination policy should they need to be updated to support our LGBTQI youth. And to the extent that there are LGBT-centered job fairs or other events that our city could participate in or sponsor or have a presence at to demonstrate our commitment, I'd like to see that. And I'd like to create or enhance an LGBT-friendly program for businesses to sort of like a safe, this is a safe place sticker kind of thing to go on, businesses to let youth know that it's a safe place for them to be. And of course, there's a lot of work to do in our community on making sure that transgender folks especially feel safe in our community. And I'll just mention.
I'll just mention that I'm very proud that my husband was among those, UCSC created the first transgender housing on campus and while I can't take credit for that, I can take credit for marrying him.
Yeah, thank you, you know I'm very proud of the work that the ACU has done here supporting the LGBT youth rights. We've done a lot of good work, not nearly enough, but we have done some. I'm not as proud of what we've done in the city and as a city to engender understanding of the LGBTQ youth community, to bring awareness to that, we just simply have not done enough. It's one thing to say we want to create safe spaces in our city, we want to create a safe city. And in order to do that, we have to have a community effort, it has to be the city council reaching out to the LGBTQ youth community. It has to be individuals going to the youth fairs, and we're talking about the various fairs, and opportunities to really, you know, really understand what they face every day. Gender-neutral bathrooms, a fine idea, safe spaces, again, a fine idea, but let's do everything we can to create LGBTQ youth a safe city. And we can do that as a city council, as a city, thank you.
Drew Davies.
Okay. Seems a shame that we have to discuss this topic in Santa Cruz, we're the most liberal town in America. However, I would suggest, I would suggest that we. We get outreach, we make outreach to the community through advertising, marketing, plan, to not teach tolerance, but to teach acceptance, to teach honor, I mean, just respect and honor of each other. You know, that's what we really need. And I agree that we do need a safe city, you know, not just safe buildings, a safe city. And we can work on that and we can do that, you know, we just have to get everybody involved and that's what I mean.
There with us are technical challenges, Drew Glover.
Thank you, technical challenges, so, okay, so, super important issue. Definitely one of the most marginalized and underrepresented groups in our community. I really feel that this pulls back to my inclusive politics aspect of my platform. Specifically, I'm not sure of any outreach that is going on currently, but I would definitely encourage outreach to engage and involve those youth in the discussion as to what it is that they feel that they need to make sure that we can offer as a city. In addition to that, working through the city to provide programs and educational opportunities that not only engage but also offer those spaces that are seen as open and welcoming and safe for them to come and participate, but also to get them more involved in local politics in general and moving them into leadership positions so that they can be the ones that are making the decisions for themselves moving forward. That means getting them involved with the youth city council, that means getting them together with other groups that are working on issues so that they can have a say in what's going on. And then in addition, really taking into account the advice and counsel given by the LGBTQI alliances in Santa Cruz because once again, they're the ones that have been doing the work on this, they're the ones that are living those lives and they're the ones that need representation, so thank you.
Drew, what is I, what is I?
Thank you.
What?
Intersex. Go back and forth.
Intersex. The I stands for intersex.
Just to clarify, the I stands for intersex.
I think we can begin by respecting. I think we can begin by respecting rights and listening, because that's where I think it begins. And being open and creating those safe spaces. Don't assume who someone is or is not. Be open. I think the city council is also in a situation to fund programs and services. I will be there to support those programs and services. If I'm elected to the city council, my door will always be open to the LGBTQ population and my magical bowl, thank you.
Dr. P. Matthews.
Thank you, I'm going to start back to my long career with Planned Parenthood where I often worked on issues related to the GLBT community and that started in the eighties with the AIDS crisis, it morphed over time to access to services, sensitive services, transgender services, sensitive sex education assurances at the state level and history curriculum in the schools. That's general, what can the city council do? I think we have really strived to create a productive, close-working relationship with the community groups that work in this area. The city council has in fact provided financial support to the diversity center and other groups serving youth. The teen center has been developed as a safe space for kids regardless of anything. It's a safe space to be and establish friends in a positive environment. We've worked with the schools, I see school board members here, to develop policies that protect kids where our collaboration can be productive. I in fact authored the council resolution that banned non-essential travel to North Carolina and Texas recently. We passed that at the Santa Cruz city level. I think it's important to be present, to be visible and be active. I personally have attended the queer youth awards ceremonies, that is so inspiring. You can see what support means to young people who are struggling with that. I just want to add, our police department early added training for how to deal sensitively with GLBT issues. And we have also included same-sex violence in our CPBAW work, thank you.
Hey Marty.
Sandy Brown.
I agree that with pretty much everything that I've heard and I'm glad I get to have the last word on this because I just want to say a couple of things about my own experiences. Yeah, I do believe that the city can do more to support programs within collaboration with the city schools to support LGBT, TI, yeah, QI, thank you. Sorry, I'm running out of time, but yes, our community. But I also think that we have to think about the challenges that our community faces especially because the question was specifically about youth, right? So youth, I learned a lot pedagogically, since I'm a teacher, I told you that already. Pedagogically, I learn as much from my students, much more from them than I teach them. And I learned a lot about the challenge of homelessness among this community. And I think that the city can do a lot more to provide support in that arena. I have lots of ideas about it, I won't share them all, but I think we can do way better in addition to education, et cetera.